We had a pretty good gallery or some of them are still here, so we appreciate you coming about and coming out tonight and learning about the civic process. So now, John, you're going to do this one?
Okay. Up front here, we have the Stowe Board Council candidates. And what we're going to do is we're going to go right down the line. I'll have you introduce yourself, and then you can give a general background and qualifications, what you feel you have for the particular job. Okay? Go ahead, Joanne.
My name is Joanne Gross. I want to thank veterans and their families who have served our country. I want to thank the veterans and their families who have served our country and for allowing us to use this facility. I also would like to talk to the C and P. What has made America the greatest country in the world? The Declaration of Independence and our Constitution. They define our country. The vision of our founding fathers was life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for you, the people. Your rights come from God, and my motivation to run for office is to protect those foundational rights. As your council representative, my desire is to encourage all Stowe residents to express their concerns on issues. My goal is to make decisions reflecting the voice of the people. I am approachable, motivated, a learner, considerate, and trustworthy. I will respect and represent you. I look forward to meeting with each of you personally this evening and in the future. Please cast your vote. Ward two, writing candidate, Joanne Gross. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. My name is Jim Costello. I am the incumbent for Ward two. First of all, I'd like to thank the fine citizens of Ward two. It has truly been an honor and privilege to represent them. For those of you who don't know me, I'll give you a quick synopsis of the information. It's on my flyer located at the back of the table. I've been married to my wife Sandy for 40 years. I've lived in Ward two for 35 years. My sons Chad and Christian graduated from both Stowe High School and Kent State University and live in the area. I have four grandchildren, Lydia, Galen, Riley, and Cole, and I'm expecting the fifth to land in micro before the end of the year. I graduated from Akron University, and I'm a certified personal professional with over 40 years' experience. I retired from the Navy Reserves in 2006 with 30 years' experience. While serving on council for the last 10 years, I've served on all the committees, have been president for the last two years, vice president of council for three years, and chairman of the Finance Committee for three years. Every election year, the candidates are always asked the three basic same questions: why do you want to run or be reelected? What qualifies you to serve? And what do you expect to achieve while in office? Any group or organization or activity I've been involved with, I have always been an active participant. I firmly believe it's only through personal involvement that change happens. It is this belief that made me run originally for council and why I wish to continue to serve. I believe my 40 years of business experience, 30 years of military experience, and 10 years of city experience, I can apply all of this experience to my council duties and come up with a common sense decision that will be acceptable to citizens of my ward and the city of Stowe. And before I get to being again much like I was last year, I'll quit at that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. We have some to Kelly, please.
Hi, I'm Kelly Toddland. I'm a candidate for Ward three, City Council. I've lived in Stowe now for 15 years with my wife Lisa and my two daughters, who are both students at Stoner and Falls High School. My background's a little bit different. I've spent the last 22 years in collections. So I've spent 22 years of looking at budgets, finding bottom-line numbers, working with individuals to adjust their budgets. Again, it's not fun at all times, but I do have that experience for 22 years. Not the job everybody wants to have, but it's a career. Other qualifications that I think we need as city councilmen is we need to be involved. As a city councilman, we need to do more than sit behind the bench and make vote-on decisions. We need to be involved with the community. I'm involved with the Stowe Band Parents, the Boosters Club. I'm on the Commission for Disabilities in the city of Stowe, trying to make the city better for all individuals within Stowe. I'm also a member of the Administration Board for my church. I've been a three-year chairperson for Relay for Life. So we need to be involved in the community. We also need to be committed. If you ask anybody that I've worked with or dealt with, I follow through. I don't take something and lay it aside and forget about it. Also, we have to be honest. Regardless of whether you agree with me or not, you'll always know where I stand on an issue. I'm not afraid to disagree, as we all will not agree 100%. But again, we also have to remember, what is our job? Our job here, the most important job, is representing you, our citizens of Stowe, to make Stowe a proactive city and community where we can all work, live happy lives, and feel safe in our own communities. That's our main objective.
Thanks, Kelly. If you have some mic to Bob, please. Oh, everyone mic?
Hello? Okay, good. Hello. My name is Bob Adeska. I am the nonpartisan candidate for Ward four, Stowe City Council. A little bit about myself. Our family moved here in 1960. My brothers and sisters and I grew up in the Meadowburg Lake area and also the neighborhood allotment areas of the city. In 1974, I enlisted in the U.S. Air Force, where I spent eight years as a jet engine mechanic. And then in 1980, I was honorably discharged from the Air Force, came back to the city of Stowe, met my wife Pam, who I've been married to for 33 years. We build a home in Wild Gorge Estates where we currently reside. For 35 years, I've been a construction project manager and business owner. And now that I have a little bit more time, I decided to run for City Council Ward four. In 1990, I was elected to serve on the City Council. I was chairman of the Roads and Safety and Public Improvements Committees. We had a lot of good success back then, helping to get our water system back from Summit County so that new residents could pay us for their water bills. So that was one good effort. Another thing we were able to do was, as a community effort, we built the Stowe Kids' Playground, Skip Playground, up on the City Hall property there. It was a community event. I was a construction foreman, one of the construction foremen's there. And through the community involvement, we were able to put that playground together in about three days. It's amazing. I wish it still was in good shape like it was back then, but we'll get there again. Is that it? Thanks for coming.
At this time, I would like to excuse Bob Adeska from Ward four for the questions. And we'll start a general question. See if you can see. Thank you. Okay, this general question will be asked of all three of you, and we'll start with Joanne. What do you think is the most important and challenging issue currently facing the city of Stowe? As a council member, what would you do about this issue?
I think we have multiple issues that are going on currently. And I think that people should be recognized for what they want to say about the issues. And I'm glad to know that people do come to council, but they only seem to come when there's an issue. I've been coming to council off and on, and I started the same way, coming because I thought something was important. I think our budget is a very important thing. If you have to maintain an income and an outflow that's balanced, why isn't the city? And I know the federal government isn't. But if we do it on a small basis on our own, then that's an important thing. So I feel that we need to be balanced. I believe residents should be residents, and I know that there are lots of problems in each neighborhood, and people come only when it's specific for them, as we have seen in the past and is currently being presented right now. And I believe we need to be heard. We are the representatives of all the people, and when the majority of people come in and have an issue, I'm concerned about it. The tax issue right now is an issue that is being laid on the backs of the working people who have had salaries cut, benefits cut, and fear that they're going to lose their job. I believe the police department needs the money, and the money should not just go into the general fund. It should be specifically for the police department, if that's what it's going to be. And I believe that the school board needs to be responsible also for the safety in schools. It should be a shared thing between the police department and the school board. It's difficult. It's really difficult because there are sides, and each one has something that they think is important. I want to represent the majority of you who come in, will talk to me or call me, and my number is on all of my material, and please stop and get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Jim, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I think we've heard it five or six times already. The answer is, just as everybody has said, we have three issues. You've got the budget, we've got economic development, and we've got the infrastructure. Those are the three important issues within the city. We have to maintain the infrastructure. We have to maintain a budget that is fiscally responsible, and we have to improve our economic development. All of those things, we all are striving to do. Some disagree with the way we're doing it, and that's your right. But we're all up here trying to do what we can for the citizens of Stowe to the best of our ability, and those are the three main issues for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Kelly?
Thank you. Again, just echoing, you know, the budget, economic development, and the infrastructure. One thing that I want to touch on is our first responders. And again, as somebody mentioned earlier, that tying it in with the school, it kind of puts people, you know, on a gray area. But let's not forget, and people say that communities are being overreactive about funding their first responders, but ask the people in Sharton, should they have been proactive? Ask the people in Sandy Hook, should they have been proactive? Ask the people in Columbine, should they have been proactive? We need to support our forces. And again, as I said, tying it with the schools and safety, you know, it's going to pull at the heartstrings of many of us out here, but that is one of our big issues, and we're going to have to find it. Whether I'm on council or the council that's elected, you're going to need to find a way within the budget to still make budget means and still support our first responders.
Thanks, Kelly. That is our first question. Now it's time for the ask question. Let's hear the ask.
I am a nurse, and I can help you with a little...
Okay, this is for Joanne. Do you feel that the city's park and recreation programs are adequate? If yes, why? If no, what would you like to change, and how would you like to fund it?
I'm really enjoying that we do have a very nice park situation. We've got great bypass, we've got walking trails. I know people that have pets are really excited about the Bow Wow Park. One of the things I always desired, that we would have something like a auditorium here in Stowe, and I always thought if I ever got wealthy, that that would be something that I think that the people of Stowe would really enjoy. I know we have private enterprises, but I like having been able to use other facilities in other towns in the past. I do not want us taking a lot of grant money because grant money has a hook, a hook that the government demands for us to do certain things, and sometimes it isn't really good in the long run for the public. So I think we need to be cautious when we do get grants and to think about that. I think that people need to participate in keeping up the city itself and working towards a really nice town. Participation is so important. Working people don't have the time to go out and use a lot of the facilities. I see that a lot of it's used in senior citizen rounds. You know, I really appreciate what's happened here to have a senior citizen center and an opportunity to use that. I'm not too sure about the financial situation and how the city government supports the park and rec system, but I certainly think that Silver Springs and the facilities there are just wonderful, and I think the opportunity that we had to have campers there coming from out of the country is even greater an emphasis for people to know about the city of Stowe abroad as well, and I thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Ask question number two. Go ahead.
I guess it's three here, so I'll take this one. One only, so I'll take the one that I know you want. Okay, ready?
As state monies that have been allocated to Stowe have been cut, how would you address this issue of reducing funding?
That's a very good question. The way to address that issue is, again, with a balanced budget. And like everybody has previously said, you have to work within the parameters that you can give them. You have X number of dollars, you have to spend it wisely, and you have to spend it in the best manner for the city of Stowe. We would love to have the state give us the money back that they have taken away, but I don't think that's going to happen, and I don't think the federal government's going to give us any more money back. So it relies on us doing what we're tasked to do, come up with a budget that is economically feasible for maintaining all of the infrastructure, the police department, parks and rec, and what the citizens of Stowe deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And the last question goes to Kelly. What is your position on the expansion of Mahaw for Chevrolet? Please explain.
Well, in economic development, we look at that as a business expansion to expand. One issue that arises though, again, we have to look at our citizens and who we represent. You know, taking away residential property, again, and the argument is to park cars. Is that a good idea? You know, that's a hard question because you still want economic development, but you don't want to see people lose their property. And that's a tough question. Kind of stuck in a rock and hard place on that. Yeah, I'll take the other question. But I've been at the council meetings where they've discussed it, and from an outsider's standpoint, looking in at it, it is because the people have a very good argument that, you know, you are taking three residential properties and rezoning, and then where does the rezoning stop after that? It's three houses now. Is it going to be two houses in another 10, 15 years? You know, it's something we got to look at. How far does the economic development go before it starts causing an issue in the residential areas?
Thank you, Kelly. Well, that concludes this round of questioning for these candidates. I'll excuse you this time and turn it over to Karen, and she'll take on the last group. Thank you.
Will the candidates for Stoner and Falls School Board please come forward? We have Geraldine Bedio, David Egan, Dave McCott, Patricia Matthews, Bob Brady, and Karen Wright. Okay, we'll start with Geraldine Bedio, and this is the qualifications and information about the candidate. So we'll start. Oh, there's one right there. There's a microphone on your table.
Good evening. My friends call me Jerry. My birth name is Geraldine. I've lived here in Stowe for 44 years. I've been married to my husband for 51 years. I have three grown children who have graduated from Stoner and Falls Schools. I have several grandchildren who have also graduated from our financial educational system. I am involved in volunteering with my husband, Donald. We do for the veterans, so we do volunteer for Brexel Hospital, we now go into the Revendive Satellite Facility. I'm a former Girl Scout leader, and I am a former employee of the Stoner and Falls School System. I have worked for Stoner and Falls Schools for 34 years. I have worked up from a two-hour position in the food service department to the central kitchen manager at the high school. I worked there for approximately 15 years. I have now retired, seven years. I have attended all the school board meetings in the past seven years. I have also attended the Safety Task Force at the City Hall, which involves the school system and the safety of your children. I'm very much involved in the education and the safety and the expenditures of the school system. I believe we have an excellent school system, and I'd like to serve on the board to make sure that it continues. I have my literature on the table, and there's a lot of things I'd like to see done. One of them is fiscal responsibility and, of course, continuing the programs that we have in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Geraldine. And next, we have David Egan.
Thank you. I think I'll not use the microphone. My voice carries pretty well. I assume everyone can hear me back there. If not, you can read me. But anyway, my name is Dave Egan. I'm married, have a son, and he went through the entire Stowe school system. I have a bachelor's degree in chemical engineering received in 1971 from the University of Dayton. And I've worked in the plastics industry for 40 years. Most of those years were spent at BF Goodrich, where I functioned as a technical service manager. I have always considered education the great equalizer in terms of providing opportunity to less fortunate kids to excel in academic symboleums to those who have greater resources associated with them. And as far as my credentials are concerned, as I mentioned, 40 years in the plastics industry, and some of the tasks that I did included writing papers, getting a patent, writing literature, giving presentations to audiences larger than this actually in America, Asia, Europe, giving presentations at technical conferences in specific industries, including coatings, adhesives, and composites. And I feel that those skills that I developed should be adaptable to any task that I might have as a member of a school. So other than that, I'm sure with more time, but that's how I should look right now. I have more written, but I don't have those in front of me. I like this thing. I like to think I'm a pretty good contemporary.
Well, thanks, Dave.
I don't have no ideas to use it though. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. And we have next, Dave McCott.
Good evening. Thank you for staying tonight. I know it's a long evening. My name is Dave McCott. By profession, I'm a criminal justice emergency management homeland security professor at the University of Akron. My big issue is going to be school safety. I served on Mayor's School Safety Task Force, and there's still much work to be done, and I wish to contribute to that. I'm also, I serve in capacity as Training Chair for the Northern Ohio Bound Crime Consortium, which is chaired by the U.S. Attorney. I consult for the Northeast Ohio Regional Fusion Center and other homeland security entities. I'm a consultant for the FBI on the lone wolf active shooter scenario. Now, I've been trained by the United States Secret Service in their active shooter program. I teach for the Police Executive Beership College. I teach in policing strategies and organizational change, and I serve on the University of Akron's Safety Consortium. A few years back, after Virginia Tech, actually a few days after, I convened a number of mental health professionals and law enforcement professionals and educators to come together to try to solve this problem. I'm sad to say, we still see this occur, and I could not sit in my living room with a good conscience with my two children who are in elementary school. Jacob's in third grade. Elaine will be starting kindergarten next year at Woodland and do nothing about this. So that's my big issue. I am also an educator. I don't want you to think I'm a one-trip pony with the security administration. I do have 16 years of experience in higher education. I've won three teaching awards, including the highest teaching award from my college. I teach at the college essentially at the University of Akron. It's a college of technology and professional studies, so I believe very strongly in providing students with the technology they need to succeed and provide them 21st century skills. And those are essentially the themes of my campaign: security, 21st century skills, and technology to succeed. Thank you very much for listening to me tonight.
Thanks, Dave. And next will be Patricia Matthews.
First of all, I want to thank all the members of C and P for enabling us to be here tonight to meet with all of you. And I have to say, I'm overwhelmed with how many of you have come tonight. I have to like a comment with Jerry, it sounds like. I too, I've been in Stowe for 45 years, married to my husband for 51, three children, all graduates of Stowe and also Akron U, seven grandchildren, four graduated from Stowe, one from Ohio State. My own background, back in 1967, I graduated with a BA in history, and I was one of the lucky ones that was able to stay home then for the next 17 years to raise my family. So I was able to do the PTA and the Broome Mother, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts. I did it all. I'm very, very thankful for it. Also during that time, I was very involved with Hoy Family. In fact, Father's Ava used to call me the comfy lady. I was there so much volunteering. I also taught religion, sixth grade in high school for a number of years. During that time, I went back to Akron U and obtained my certification to teach grades K through eight, which I was very glad to have done. And even before I finished my last class, Hoy Family approached me and asked if I wanted a job. Wouldn't that be wonderful nowadays for our teachers if that could happen? So then for the next 19 years, I spent my time in Hoy Family, nine of them teaching third grade, and then the next 10 years, teaching my beloved history. And I see I have 30 seconds left, so I took too much time on that. First of all, I want to commend what I've learned from my four years when I was on the school board, what a wonderful school district we have, and it's quite evident tonight with all the wonderful students that we have in attendance. So thank you, boys and girls.
Thanks, Patricia. And next up is Bob Brady.
Good evening. My name is Bob Brady. I'm a candidate for the Stoner and Falls School Board. I want to thank C and P for having us, and thank you for all you for being here. It is a great turnout. It's very encouraging. That's very encouraging. I moved to Stowe ten years ago. My wife and I started a family. And the biggest reason we moved here to Stowe is because of the great reputation of the school system. I've learned over the last five years while my dogs go on the Indian Trail, my old son, Lakeview, that my reputation was well deserved. However, there are always things that you can improve upon. That's what I want to address. First, a little bit about my background. I was raised in Oak Brookland, on the outskirts of Cleveland. My dad was an executive in downtown. My mom was actually a school teacher, substitute school teacher at my school. I was the oldest of six kids. I graduated from Hoyne High School in Parma. And actually, a month after I graduated, I was in Orlando, Florida, in Navy boot camp. I spent two years in Orlando and then also in New York in the Navy Nuclear Pipeline, which is considered the most demanding academic program in the U.S. military. After I graduated from there, I was assigned to the USS Miami, which was a fast attack submarine out of Groton, Connecticut. I worked in the interim there, and I was actually involved in combat twice in the same deployment, which was the first time that happened for a submarine since World War II. After I got my honorable discharge, I moved back to the Cleveland area. I started a series of technical jobs and using what I learned in the Navy and then being able to keep continuing education, I worked up to my current job, which is designing MRI coils for GE Healthcare. And I also run the 3D printing lab. And the reason I'm bringing up all of my technical background is because I think I can use that to help some of the areas where I know the school system now could be a little bit better. Science, technology, my biggest things is the STEM discipline, science, technology, engineering, math. And the way I think that could work is I actually brought a hundred kids from Kimpton to a place where I work, GE. They actually got to take a couple hours to see the engineering, learn what engineers do. I was able to work with two very good teachers in Jake Miller and David Turnett. They designed a competition where the kids actually designed parts themselves on a computer. I printed them out, and winners got to take them home. And it was great seeing them learn, seeing them have fun, and potentially learn a new career. Thank you very much. Please remember me in November.
Thanks, Bob. And next up is Karen Wright.
Good evening. Nice to see everybody here tonight. My name is Karen Wright, and my husband and I have four children. Three have graduated from the high school. One is currently attending. I have a business management degree from Akron University. I'm active in many committees related to our school and our community and very active in my church. Currently, I serve as president of our school board. While on the board, I've been a part of holding our spending. I'm holding in line our spending while our expenses keep going up, just like our households have expenses that are constantly going up for utilities and everything it takes to run our homes. I've been involved in successfully negotiating fair contracts with our employees, and we always have to be conscious of our taxpayers' dollars. I've supported the new AP course, the environmental science course at the high school, along with the new aviation technical career program. And I also support and am a part of being involved in our universities and getting our school more involved in our local universities to benefit our students. Needless to say, all the decisions of a board member needs to be made with the part that children come first. All the decisions should begin with the question, how does this impact our students' learning? Because that's why we're here, the students, to learn. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Karen. Now we have a general question that will be asked of each candidate. And the general question is, and we'll start down with Geraldine again at the beginning. What is the most important and challenging issue currently facing the Stone and Row Falls School District? As a school board member, what would you do about those issues?
I believe, like everything else that's affiliated with our economy, we have to struggle with the expenditures and the funding. The legislature from the state and the federal level have cut it drastically. But I also believe that fiscal responsibility as a board member to make sure that we are spending our taxpayer money wisely, that we are putting it into the proper courses for the children and to benefit us as taxpayers. After all, the children are our future. We have to worry about them more than we have to worry about ourselves. Someone else has looked out for us. We have to look out for them. Giving them the education, which I believe we have the best that we can offer right now. We have fine students. We have a number of different programs that we offer. And the thing of it is, not everyone is college oriented. We need to look at vocational and technical programs for our kids because not all of them are going to college for one reason or another. And I believe that we should look into and get more involvement from the community so that you, as a taxpayer, know why, who, when, where, why. The school board is doing what they're doing and how they're spending our taxpayers' money. We owe that to the general public. Thank you.
Thanks, Geraldine. And next up is Dave. Do you want me to repeat?
No, not necessary. Yeah. Once again, I'll say that when I was going door-to-door to get the signature to put on the ballot, I found it to be a real learning experience for a number of reasons. But to answer this question, I think I can tell you that in one case, the lady, she happened to be a retired Akron school teacher. And what she told me, by the way, it was unsolicited, I didn't ask for this comment. But she told me that, in her opinion, that the Stowe schools are way behind the times compared to Akron schools. So that's all. I'll leave it at that. And I don't know the specifics where she was coming from. I didn't ask her because I had to go along the next door and get the signatures and everything. So if that is indeed the case, I mean, I would welcome the opportunity to work with educators to indeed find out if indeed there's any truism.
Thank you, David. Would you like me to repeat the question, Dave?
No, thank you. I was in Walmart not too long ago, and my son walked by a bin of Nerf footballs. And he kind of stopped and hooked it up, wondering what he was going to do. He picked one of them up and kind of looked at it like, was this bizarre? I don't know. What is this? You know, when I was growing up, I spent a lot of time with Nerf footballs, playing in the street, throwing it back and forth. Jacob looked at it, put it back in. I said, Jacob, do you want the Nerf football? He's like, no, we're the video games. Okay. He got the Nerf football, by the way. We play a lot outside. He's going to do that. But the point is, we're facing twenty-first century issues. And the students we're teaching now are much different than they were even ten years ago. And I saw that firsthand with the students that I have, certainly. We have to make the transition to twenty-first century education. We have other countries like England, for example, that dropped eighty billion dollars into entirely retrofitting their high schools. They're eight years into the plan to make learning studios and workspaces to use the new methods of instruction, to actually have students face me like you're facing me now and talk to you in what they call the didactic. That is the old, old way. It's time to use more engaging methods. It's time to use technology, especially since we're transitioning to state testing models that are going to be computer-based. So if you go into Woodland where my son is and you see that there's not enough computers, you have to ask the question, why is that? How do we get there? So I'm a big fan of twenty-first century education, moving toward there. I know how to get there. Certainly, the budgetary issues are significant, to say the least. The state has given with one hand and taken with two, so to speak. So we have to overcome that. But I think it starts by knowing where you need to go. And where we need to go is engaged twenty-first century education, problem solving, critical thinking, collaboration, open workspaces, digital literacy. And that's really what I would like to emphasize.
Thanks, Dave. And Patricia Matthews will answer the general question.
First of all, to the subject, when I was on the board for four years, we had to face that difficult task of cutting over eight million dollars. It had been like ten to eleven years since we had any new money. I was especially proud of the fact that before I was off the board, we did cash two lebys. And I know that the board and the school district is using the money wisely. I agree with Dave. With the new report card coming out, we are definitely going to have to update our technology. I'm sure, I know our IT lady at the school central office, she's top voice. She got us a lot of computers for our district on a budget. So I think that's going to be good there, too. But I do want to get back on board. I want to be a part of this. I'm real concerned about the report card and the way we are going to be evaluating our students. I want to make sure it's fair. I want to make sure our evaluations of the teachers are fair. There's so much out there that is hitting us during this present time that is so important. I was in a trenches as a teacher. I know what it's like. I know that some students can get it, and some you really have to work hard, work harder than others. That's the nitty-gritty. That's the nitty-gritty of education. And I'm so proud to say that I learned when I was on the school board, we have a great educational system in Stowe. I know what that lady was talking about in Akron. It's one of the finest. I mean, we have so many dedicated administrators, teachers, staff, parents, volunteers. They give hundreds of hours every year to the students. You know, they all say it takes a community to raise a child. And yes, Stowe has raised a lot of children.
Thank you, Patricia. Bob Brady will answer the general question. Would you like me to repeat?
No, I don't. Thank you. So pretty much just to echo, I mean, we're kind of getting to the same point in all these questions. Everybody's doing the same thing. Technology is important. You know, I'm a technology guy. I do a lot of engineering work. I work with cutting-edge technology and 3D printers. And I think that's important, getting kids exposed to it. But also, I think it can be a double-edged sword. You don't want to go too far, spend too much money, and actually take away from the actual learning that goes into how you would operate those things. So I'd like to see, you know, a really good base of mathematics and science understanding and a classroom setting first, and then move into more of a technology-based. For an example, my daughter, she does a better powerball presentation than I do now. So that's great, but I don't know how it's going to help her if she doesn't understand the concepts that she's putting into it at the moment. Another thing is like the LA school system, they just had this big, they gave everybody an iPad. They're going to do all this wonderful technology work, which is great in theory, but the kids ended up hacking them and doing Facebook at lunchtime or during class. So we just got to be careful with that. We don't want to have the best toys, just have the best toys. We've got to make sure we have the best value. We're getting the best education. That's really the point, is education. And we have to have a good base of knowledge before we can actually use those tools correctly. So again, I'm a technology guy. I love technology. But just going for the technology, I don't think is the right answer. We need to make sure we have a good understanding first. And then the budget, you know, very concerned about the budget. You know, we've got a decent base of money now. And I know the five-year forecast has us losing that and then running a deficit in a few short years. I want to make sure that we have a good understanding of why that is and see what we can do to help make sure that that doesn't actually happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. And Karen Wright. Two things I'd like to talk about. First, as citizens in our community, I would really like to see an effort to talk to our government officials about how our schools are funded. It's important, and it's not gone anywhere for so long. It really needs to be done. And I hope at some point in the near future that we can do that as a whole because it needs to change. We all know that, too. The thing about the state report cards, on any given moment, every given day, whatever number or whatever measurement they're going to come up with, in my opinion, we've met those and exceeded most of those. It's just on that given day, a moment in time, having a bad day, whatever. I still think we do excellent things all the time. And that's where our, I guess, our strong points are. It's in our staff and all the people that are communicating and teaching our children. So I don't think, as far as changing, I would enrich the things that we already have. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. And as John said, I have a basket question. Karen Wright has the first basket question. What is your position on the current pay-to-play policy, which includes community service groups? Please explain.
My position on the pay-to-play is, there again, it's two-sided. You don't want to not include children that can't afford that pay to participate. But the reason it's there is that that helps us to have those clubs, to have those sports. So in the pay-to-play, when there isn't a certain student that can't afford to do that, I think, right now, or I know, there's many things in place that would help those students. But just as our funding is not as it was a couple of years ago and the other sports that we need to keep in our schools and the clubs that are important to our students, pay-to-play is one way that we need to keep those programs in place. And they are all important, whether it's a sports or a club. They make our students better citizens in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, this question is for Bob. If elected to the school board, what will be your top five objectives?
Top five objectives? Well, one's going to be fiscal responsibility, making sure that our budget is in line. Everything kind of stems from that. No matter what you want to do, what you can do is the more important thing. Make sure that we're getting the best value for you guys, the citizens. Number two, I'd like to foster more community involvement. You know, not specifically you guys, I mean, everybody's here. That's great. I'd like to see at least as many people, if not more, at board meetings. I'd like to see maybe some innovative ways to make sure that the board is more active in the community. For the summer blast, why doesn't the board have a booth? Why don't we out there talking to you guys? Just different things. Come up with some really innovative ways. We can interact more with you. You guys can interact more with us. We make sure that we're doing the job that you want us to do. Number three is technology. I love technology. If I had, you know, the unlimited budget, what I'd like to do is create a technology center. Seeing that, you know, maybe work with some of the universities. I know Kent State has a nice technology center that some of our schools are already working with. Kind of bring something in the Stowe. And it kind of ties into my next one, number four, which is some adult education, too. I mean, the schools, children are one focus, absolutely. But you know what? We have been there longer than the schools. You have children using them. Why can't we use those to be a little more open to adults, too, because of them continuing training? What I mean with that is going with the technology is we have a technology center. We have some nice equipment during the summers, during evenings. Why can't we have adult continuing training, retraining programs, something we can do to get the community back in there using their own equipment a little bit better? Fifth one's to be safety. That's the big topic here, too, right? I don't necessarily agree with putting all the money into the school, having the only officers. Officer's important. I had a meeting with the principal of Lakeview, Mr. Waugh. I won't pronounce his name, I'll slaughter him, I'm sorry. But, you know, he loves having the police presence, but they don't need to be there all the time. If we have a nice roving presence, you know, it's unpredictable, random. I think that would be enough, and we still have enough money for all the rest of the things that Stowe needs for their officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, this question is for Patricia Matthews. What is your position on the outsourcing of school buses and why?
Fortunately, it's not a move for me. My fellow board members, when I was on board, knew my position. Absolutely against outsourcing of any one of our people in Stowe, whether it be buses, custodians, food workers, you name it, opposed. I've also been on board. I understand why these things come up. But I think we should be able to work around them and work with our people, keep communications open. That's it? I won't have to have like thirty seconds or fifteen seconds. Definitely opposed.
Thank you, Patricia. Okay, this question is for Dave McCott. As a school board member, how would you reach out to the community? Please be specific.
Well, I think, we talked a lot about technology. I think that's the first way to do that, to make yourself present. There's a variety of methods to do that through social media. Certainly, I would make myself available. I already am available on social media. Be in the community, be involved with the community, be out in the community and talk to people. Be that good old-fashioned way, just being out there and talking to people, being available. I can't really go to any more specifics than that. I don't have any, unfortunately, any real creative answer to that. So I'm going to just leave it there.
Thank you, Dave. This question is for Dave Egan. What is your position on school-funded, all-day kindergarten? How could this be funded?
My position on all-day, all-day school kindergarten funding.
What is your position on school-funded, all-day kindergarten?
With assumption that right now that it's being funded. It's not. Well, what's that? It is? I need some help. Before I answer that, it's not. Well, I haven't given much thought to that frankly. Okay, I haven't given much thought to that frankly. So I guess I don't have an answer to that. If I were on the school board and I had the information accessible to me, then I think I should probably make a reasonable decision. Right now, I don't have the, I don't feel like, although I will say that kindergarten is important, there's no doubt about that. I really feel like that. But as far as funding goes, it should come from public dollars. I don't know.
Okay, thanks Dave.
And for those who couldn't hear me, I'm glad you did. Because it wasn't a very good answer, I'll be the first to admit that.
And our last question goes to Geraldine Bedio. Do you have any specific changes you want to make in school district policies or programs? If so, what changes do you want to make and why?